You're unmuted.
Okay. Greetings, EJ. Can you hear us okay?
Yep, I can hear you fine.
Okay, great.
And it's a way, it's not a straight decline healing it.
Yeah.
And that's the weirdest thing is just rock.
All right. We'll give that five more minutes. All right. Good evening, Sammy. Can you hear us okay?
I might check on you.
It might then be around pretty late.
Sammy Peterson, can you hear us okay?
Okay. Can you hear me now, Bruce?
I can. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Do you, do you have a plan to take your cards out? Hopefully never. I think I said.
I have to page Larry. That's true.
Okay, we'll start taking updates. I mean, can I get a card?
It'll be about last service day.
No, tag them all that day.
Yeah.
Do you have a card?
But if I have to let them count, they're saying that's a very sad day week or not. Because their cycle cards are being taken on their last service day.
Okay.
I don't have a card with me here at half.
Okay. Here, I think it works better when we communicate. He said I should be moving so quickly that he hasn't had yet. Next one was getting his cards. Sorry.
I told her hopefully never.
Right. Okay, you want to just write it down? That'd be good one.
Yeah, just a couple of minutes.
I love the confidence.
His last two minutes really is a lot. Okay, you heard that. That's what comes off the floor.
Oh, yeah.
It is.
Yeah.
I hope money.
Yeah.
Okay, welcome to the Atkins City Council meeting for September ninth, twenty twenty five. Thank you all for coming tonight. Um, first item as we all recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Will you all stand please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, tonight we have two council members online and they are EJ Bell and Samantha Peterson. We'll begin with the roll call of those in the room. Roll call for Trevor Durski.
Present.
Jim Kane.
Present.
David Fisher.
Present.
EJ Bell online.
Present.
And Samantha Peterson online.
Present.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda by the City Council. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Fisher.
Second.
Second by Durski. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote is Trevor Durski. Jim Kane.
Aye.
Da- David Fisher.
Aye.
EJ Bell.
Yes.
And Samantha Peterson.
Aye.
Motion carries. This time, um, we have a citizen's opportunity to address the council on any items that are not on the agenda. That's in conformance with Iowa open meetings law. No action or deliberation can occur on items presented during the citizens forum. I ask that you walk to the lectern, state your name for the record, and speakers are encouraged to limit comments to no more than three minutes. Does anyone that'd like to speak tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item number four, unfinished business. That is a motion to approve ordinance two hundred and thirty-three in order in submitting the code of ordinance of the city of Atkins, Iowa. Uh, amending amended by amending chapter twenty-three, city administrator, uh, by the city council. This will be the final reading, the third reading of the, um, of this ordinance. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve two thirty-three.
Motion by Fisher. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Kane. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Ask for the roll call vote. Trevor Durski.
Aye.
Jim Kane.
Aye.
David Fisher.
Aye.
EJ Bell.
Aye.
And Samantha Peterson.
Aye.
Motion carries. And we also have, uh, ordinance two hundred and thirty-four in ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Atkins, Iowa, by amending chapter fifteen, mayor and chapter seventeen, council. Uh, this again is the final reading, the third reading for this ordinance. Um, for passage, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve two thirty-four.
Motion by Fisher. Do we have a second? Got a second by Durski. Any further discussion? Again, this is the third time we've presented this, so, uh, hearing no discussion. Moving on to the roll call. Trevor Durski.
Aye.
Jim Kane.
Aye.
David Fisher.
Aye.
EJ Bell. S- well, Samantha Peterson will come back, EJ.
Aye. I don't know if you heard me.
Oh, we got you now, EJ. That's EJ Bell, aye. Samantha Peterson.
Sorry about that. Aye.
All ayes, motion carries. And, uh, these ordinances become effective once, um, they are published. And then moving on to, uh, number five, new business. This is, uh, consideration of solid waste recycling and yard waste collection, RFP response proposals. Um, and, uh, we'll begin with a review of the, um, of the act, of the matter by Scott Florrie, city administrator.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, council, uh, just, uh, you've got some materials in your packet on this, but just in ways of background information, if you remember back at the meeting on June tenth, uh, the council had approved the issuance of a notice of intent to not renew our contract, the existing contract that we had with, uh, waste management. Again, it's no reflection on, uh, any service related issues. Uh, that was just a provision that was provided for in article two of that agreement that indicated that, uh, unless the either party provided the other, uh, not less than ninety days written notice in advance of expiration of that contract, which was set to expire at the end of twenty twenty-five, that the contract would automatically renew and, and, uh, it would renew a five percent, uh, rate increase. So the council, uh, did prepare that notice of intent to not renew that existing agreement with waste management and, uh, we submitted that, uh, timely to, uh, waste management, letting them know that, uh, we did not wish to renew the contract pursuant to the terms of our agreement with them. Uh, the regular meeting on July eighth, the council then reviewed the RFP that was drafted in detail for solid waste recycling and yard waste collection services. Uh, the yard waste, uh, recycling and, uh, garbage collection, uh, RFP was pretty widely distributed through various channels. Was on our website, uh, social media channels, uh, mailings, et cetera. Scheduled call for a proposal to be submitted by noon on August twenty-sixth, uh, with the opening happening the next day on the twenty-seventh at ten AM here in the council chambers of the city hall. Uh, we did receive four responses to our solicitation. They were one from Waste Management, two from ABC Disposal Systems, three from Cluver Sanitation, and four from, uh, S and J Sanitation. Uh, I would add that all those providers, uh, uh, do currently serve other municipalities and other clients within our region. All are well, well known. And I just would extend an appreciation to each and every one of the, uh, contractors for the time that they committed and devoted to developing their response to our solicitation. It's much appreciated. Uh, in terms of the review and evaluation of the proposals that were received, as I mentioned, those were opened here on August twenty-seventh and AM. Well, we evaluated those. Uh, uh, my recommendation is to stick to the, um, system that we're most closely using now, which is, uh, pick up of all three items on Wednesdays. Uh, the sixty-five gallon container for weekly solid waste collection, ninety-five gallon container for bi-weekly recycling collection, and then of course, weekly solid wa- uh, excuse me, weekly, uh, yard waste collection. So the proposals then we got from the contractors, uh, Cluver Sanitation was sixteen forty-five per month. S and J Sanitation, seventeen dollars and fifty cents per month. ABC Disposal Systems, nineteen fifty per month. And Waste Management was twenty-three eighty-nine per month. Uh, that was simply for solid waste and recycling. Uh, some of the providers included within that base bid, the cost of yard waste. Uh, a couple others, uh, were an additional fee for the yard waste collection. So S and J's basement of seventeen fifty did include the yard waste collection. Uh, Waste Management's, uh, proposal did include the yard waste collection in their, uh, base fee proposal. ABC Disposal Systems, uh, theirs was an additional four dollars per month on top of their base fee plus thirty-five dollars per ton. And Cluver Sanitation was, uh, four eighty-five indicated in the, uh, bid response, four eighty-five dollars per week plus forty dollars per ton. I just would add that, uh, I did clarify with the company that that was a clerical error on their part. It was supposed to be four eighty-five per month and not per week. And I did indicate that I did give a letter from the company controller attesting to that, to that issue. So, uh, a few other things within the solicitation itself. We had requested, uh, community use cardboard recycling dumpster of either a four or six yard to be located somewhere here in the community that could be used again by the community for cardboard disposal. Uh, the response we got on that was S and J, that was included in their fees, no additional cost. Uh, ABC Disposal was additional sixty dollars a month. Cluver Sanitation was zero additional on that. And Waste Management was a hundred point five additional per month. We did, uh, indicate that this would be a five-year contract with an option for an additional year beyond that, uh, uh, five-year term. So we wanted, uh, proposed rate increases for years two, three, four, and five. So the annual increase for years two, three, four, and five, uh, we had, uh, S and J Sanitation was five percent. ABC Disposal System, three percent. Cluver Sanitation, three percent. And Waste Management was five percent. Um, and a couple of the other more interesting items, uh, were the citywide cleanup day. We'd like to re-implement that here in the spring. So we asked for, just kind of describing the process that the haulers utilize and, and the costs associated with that citywide spring cleanup day. Uh, uh, S and J indicated there would be zero additional cost. Uh, Cluver Sanitation, three hundred dollars per roll-off plus fifty dollars per ton. ABC Disposal, one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars plus landfill fees. And Waste Management was three hundred dollars per, per roll-off. Uh, we asked for collection day on Wednesday, which is current collection day for all three, um, yard waste, solid waste, and, uh, recycling. And all responded that they could, uh, could provide that on Wednesday. Uh, Cluvers was, uh, to meet the dermond on that, but it, it were, uh, open to that, uh, consideration. But the other three again were, were affirmative yes to Wednesday collection. Then we also asked for, uh, response to no-cost service for all city-owned facilities. And all four providers responded that they would provide no-cost services to all city, city-owned, uh, facilities. So the recommendation, uh, that I would make after, uh, making background checks, uh, uh, I did, in this case, speak to, uh, in respect to S and J Sanitation. I did contact, uh, the city of Benton, uh, who was a community they have, uh, started serving, and got a very positive response from them, from my counterpart Aaron Benton, also the mayor of Marango, as well as the clerk in Victor. Uh, and they were my high-scoring firm. And so it was my recommendation to proceed with the proposal that we received from S and J Sanitation for, uh, weekly sixty-five gallon garbage collection, solid waste collection, bi-weekly recycling, ninety-five gallon, and the yard waste collection weekly, April through November. So in terms of the next steps in the process, so tonight we would consider a resolution, uh, whether or not you wish to, um, accept the proposal from S and J Sanitation. The next council meeting, September twenty-third, is where, uh, we could draft a contract and contract we brought back to the council. That would memorialize all of these things that were identified in the RFP. So that would be before you for consideration at your next council meeting. Uh, and then following that, we would, uh, uh, work with, uh, S and J on the transition plan, development of that. This contract, of course, would have an effective date of January first. Current, uh, hauler provider is Waste Management, so we would need to ensure that we are lockstep between Waste Management and, uh, S and J Sanitation as it relates to, uh, receipt of new containers, pick up of old containers, getting public information out, awareness out. Again, I went and talked to my counterpart in Benton. They had a similar situation that they went through and described the process of the transition from the prior hauler to S and J in a sequence. So I thought that was very, very important. Um, also, we would revise, need at some point to revise our ordinance regarding the rates for solid waste collection and landfill that would become effective January first, twenty twenty-six. So I just kind of tentatively penciled out that we'd probably start automatic or October fourteenth, twenty-eighth, and November fourth meeting. Getting that's an ordinance, so it requires three readings. So we just need to have that all completed prior to, uh, January first and so we can build into our utility building system and so forth. So. And that is all I've got on that. Does anyone have any questions? I would mention Dave and EJ both, as well as the mayor, uh, all did. I appreciate your help and assistance in reviewing these all on the, so.
Thank you, Scott. I understand that Demont Taylor is asked to speak, um, with Waste Management.
Appreciate that. And first off, just want to say thank you to the city for the longstanding relationship we've had with you. We certainly value that and, and hope to have, still hope for your vote tonight, but if we weren't to get it, certainly hope to have that sometime in the future. And want you to know that, that we respect the process you've gone through. I spoke to Scott by phone earlier this week. I told him, he's actually done a fantastic job on this whole process. I attend a lot of city council meetings where they do not do this thorough of a review. They do not make a firm recommendation to council. They just put the proposals in front of you and tell you to make a decision. So credit to Scott for the good job he's done here. Now, obviously, I disagree with the, the recommendation. The process is great. The recommendation, I, I have a little bit of umbrage with. Gotten to know Julie here tonight. Fantastic woman, great sense of humor, clear confidence. I respect you, Julie. Um, but I do think that we need to look at the data itself. And when you look at the price point of four bids, um, there's a lot there to understand from. You have three bids that are in the low twenty dollars and one that is seventeen fifty. I don't know what industries you guys work in, but when you work in any industry, whoever your competitors are, when they all come in at the same price point, but one company's way down there, I think it's only fair and natural to ask the question, what'd they miss? Something's wrong. And the only company in the room that knows what it takes to service Atkins is WM. We've been that partner for years. We have, as RFP asked, a reserve fleet of trucks. Our hauling site, I believe, is geographically closest to the city of Atkins than any other. Uh, we know what it takes to do your spring cleanups. We value that partnership and the price point we've proposed is what it takes to service Atkins with the consistency that your residents have come to experience. In fact, it's actually a rollback. I know our rate is proposed to go up a little bit from where it's at right now, but we're taking on all the tonnage disposal at the landfill, which the city would no longer pay direct. So when you integrate that in, we're rolling back our rate and we're still the high bidder. So put that in perspective about the incumbent, what they know it takes to service the city, where their price point is at. I just want to make sure you guys get the consistency of exceptional service that you deserve. I would ask for your vote for WM tonight.
Are there others that have, are there haulers that have asked? Okay.
Did you want us to speak after the vote or before? Okay.
Uh, n- n- now'd be the time to address the council.
Okay. Yeah, well, well, first of all, I'm in here one hell of a salesperson. Wish I could afford you. Um, I'm Julie Bechtel and this is my son Nate Bechtel. And, uh, we are co-owners of S and J Sanitation. My parents started it when I was a small child and, um, after we lost our parents, my parents in two thousand nineteen, they decided he was leaving the medical field to become, want to be a garbage man. So I quit my job and became his secretary in the book. Um, we've been in business for almost sixty years. Uh, when we beat out Cluver's bid, we two were like, shoot, did we mess up? Uh, we don't often get the low bid. We are usually somewhere in the middle bid. There was a nice surprise that we were the low bid this time. Uh, Bill was out with a family leave or that he probably would have got us. Um, but I can assure you, uh, we have seven thousand some customers. We have been contract haulers in three smaller communities in Iowa County since the nineteen seventies. They've never put us out to bid since they've been with us. They renew every year. We have been in Benton, which of course is a community three times the size, um, for going on two and a half years. We've had, i- it was, you know, we answer our phones, we get back to customers, we take great pride in our service. And I too, you know, on this point's good because I always get disappointed when you're working with city councils and they don't check our references. So I, I thank you for checking us out because we stand behind what we do and we don't want to come in for just five years. We want to be your hauler, by amen and no, for, forever. So we will do a good job and we will work really hard, work with you and Amen on the transition to keep it. And he, he's got a big company. He can get the cards out of here very efficiently where sometimes you're dealing with a smaller company. Can't get the old ones out and it's confusing to customers. We'd be very excited to have your vote. And Nate, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I mean, to Amen's point, I didn't miss anything when I calculated this bid, just so you guys know. Um, I might be a garbage man, but. I think you're gonna be, I think you're gonna be very happy.
Yeah, call that back. And I, and I used to run a Warren Buffett's newspapers before I became a garbage woman. And there was a publisher named Howard Harold. So for thirty-plus years, I did budgets for hundreds of millions of dollars and made plans all over single years. I know my numbers. And I miss having a CFO to run the Excel sheet. I'm pretty good. But Amen, that was a good shot.
I attract. And I, and if you get the vote, I hope Jim holds on to that.
He will.
Cause you guys deserve great service.
Thank you.
If it's S and J, I hope they.
I have to say, uh, there have been a number of complaints about Waste Management. I have never experienced it. I did have a problem with the phone numbers, but once I was informed how to set up the app, it doesn't serve as a handle. All in all, I can, I had no way, so I want to make.
Thank you for that. And, and there's actually an app and a website and the phone number?
Yes.
So you can do it however you want. It was calling city hall should be the last resort.
Yes.
One of the problems when you originally.
Jim, oh, yeah, we'd, we'd have to move on here. And I would, uh, council have an opportunity to vote. I would say that, uh, we appreciate ev- all the folks, uh, putting in their bids, the time it takes to do all that sort of thing. And, uh, appreciate, uh, the relationship we had with Waste Management. Um, and I especially remember during the duration when, um, uh, everybody was under, uh, a lot of duress, but, um, the garbage was picked up and people had to throw away a lot of food out of their, their freezers, refrigerators because of loss of power. But, um, but we're entering a new chapter here. We have worked through a process. I believe it's been fair and equitable. And, uh, that's what the council gets to consider tonight. So thank you very much for your, your input, everyone. Well, with that, um, I guess the next item would be a motion to approve, uh, resolution two zero two five zero nine zero one. This would be a resolution accepting the proposal from S and J Sanitation of the collection of solid waste recycling.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for S and J.
Motion by Bell.
Second.
Second by Fisher. Now, council, any further discussion?
I want to thank Scott. Um, this is one of the items that, um, I ran on and I, I think I shared that early on with you. Um, that it was very important to me that we take a look at basically all the services that, that, uh, we have here as a city and that we RFP. at basically all the services that, that we have here as a city, and that we RFP things as, as a, as a, as the right thing to do. Again, thank you, Scott. You put a lot of effort into this, and like, like they said, it was done very professionally. I think you, you, you have earned your keep here in Atkins for quite some time, and so has Shelley. So again, thank you so much.
I, I just, I would thank you for your assistance on these RFPs.
Any further discussion?
I appreciate everybody coming out, everybody that submitted bids. And I think this is the genius, the magic of our system. It, it has to, it has to have competition for it to work, and, and we're seeing that. We have to not make the right decision, I think, on behalf of the residents. And, and everything else aside, just what I've heard from the folk represented here, I just appreciate the, the spirit of competition that you guys are bringing, but also the ability to keep a good nature and, and kind of well meaning. So thank you for that.
All right. Hearing no further comments, we call for the roll call vote then. This would be for approval of Resolution two zero two five zero nine zero one, and that is a propos- accepting proposal of S and J Sanitation. So with that, Trevor Durski.
Aye.
Jim Kane.
Aye.
David Fisher.
Aye.
EJ Bell.
Aye.
And then Samantha Peterson.
Aye.
Motion carries. All ayes. And again, now, thank you, folks, for, uh.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, Scott, and council. Uh, two things. Number one, we're gonna work just as consistently through the end of December to deliver your residents the service that they deserve. You're not gonna see that change in any way. And then number two, we're gonna work very closely with the city and with S and J on transition plan to get our carts out, so that our carts are gone, theirs show up, there's no confusion about who's to use, who's is left behind. We'll work closely with the city on that. So thank you for the relationship we've had, and, and we hope you put it out in five years.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I hope you get promoted and go somewhere else. He's too good. We're just trying to straighten up your dollars out here. He grew up in a bar. I thank you very much, Julie, too, and I've got to do it. Thank you. We are very, very honored, and we roll with you now. Scott, if I do all call Ammon to help you, oh my God.
All right, we've got, moving on then. Item five.
She forgot something.
Five B.
Somebody said next to me that the blonde girl, she's waiting. She forgot her purse.
Okay, moving on to item number five B. That's the city of Atkins audit report. And this would be for fiscal year twenty twenty-five engagement letter. And without our review by Scott, and just keep in mind, we do have a couple of people that are on short timelines tonight. We appreciate their contribution on the, on the phone.
Thanks, mayor. I'll try to run through these real quick. As mayor, it gave us the engagement letter for the twenty twenty-five fiscal year audit report. I know it seems like we just finished up the twenty twenty-four, which we kind of did. Now we're heading into the twenty twenty-five. So the engagement letter that you have, you had this another RFP that we put out, if you recall, and remember, that was back in July, that we approved that proposal from Bonsec and Promelt for, this was a three-year contract with an option to extend an additional year if the council shows. So this covers fiscal year twenty five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, potentially twenty-eight fiscal year audit. So the first step in this process, of course, is the engagement letter, which you got a copy of there in the packet. And that just formalizes the agreement by the city to hire the auditors. So based on the same process we went through here with the solid ways where we issued the RFP, then we approved the proposal, and then we followed that up with the contract. So essentially, what the engagement letter is, is the official contract between the city and the auditing firm to prepare our audits. So as I mentioned, really is kind of the first step of our twenty twenty-five audit report. So again, the cost of the audit, twenty-five thousand dollars. It does include the single audit act, as Shelley and I were going over that earlier. It's gonna be pretty close as to whether or not we have to go through that. But if you recall, that was included in their base contract amount of twenty-five thousand. The other firms, it was about a four thousand dollar add-on if we had to do that. So looking at what we paid before and what we potentially did, we'd be looking about an eight thousand dollar a year or so savings on where we're at on this audit proposal. So and, and again, I think of the private CPA firm, I think this would be your first experience with a non-state auditor doing the work, a private CPA firm. But I think you'd be very impressed with these two folks. They're the head of the firm here that does this work. So I know them for twenty-five years, well-regarded, as you know, from the RFP. New cities like Johnston, Benton, or Iowa City, they've got some pretty big cities that they do. But, you know, weird smallest, but they do some others of Leclerc or West Berlin. And I think we're kind of a little bit closer to our side, but really excited about how good they bring them on. So I don't know if anybody has any questions on the engagement letter or.
What, what would be the meeting timeframe where we would be receiving the presentation?
Uh, goal was end of December, early January. So earlier, much earlier than you've ever gotten it. And because Trevor, I discussed previously, one thing you'll see with this firm is you'll get an actual presentation where, like this last year, kind of got a little bunch of presentation from me. You'll get an actual presentation from them, the handout materials, and charts, and graphs, and all that kind of stuff that we can put on our website and social media and get it distributed. But, you know, in years past, we've had to request the extension from the auditor, because it's supposed to be done by March thirty-first. So they haven't met that timeframe. It's just under, the State Auditor's Office understaffed, overworked, kind of thing. So our goal is to have a presentation in December and into the State Office by January.
Do we have a, thank you, Scott. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution zero nine four two, uh, zero nine zero two? That's a resolution approving authorizing mayor and city administrator executing agreement with Bonsec and Promelt for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five audit.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion by Durski, second by Fisher. Any further discussion?
Again, ditto, Scott. The hat's off to you. Thank you. I, it's nice to know that we're gonna be on schedule. It's nice to know that we're going to get things done the right way. And it, it really feels good. It really does, from, from my perspective. Thank you.
Yeah, and this is a community that's gonna be responsive to concerns or, or, you know, if we have issues, quite unlike. And able to see that it's not dependent upon their clients for their existence.
Yeah, this is brought up, I think, to public awareness and education. So all in the past are going to use a public presentation, so the community can get to come in, watch online, receive the audit presentation. So that's always something I look forward to. I don't know how many other people are looking forward to it, but.
Well, you work hard for it. So I understand that.
All right. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. The roll call vote is Trevor Durski, I, Jim Kane, and David Fisher.
Aye.
EJ Bell.
Aye.
Samantha Peterson.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Moving on to item five C. This is the East City Park Pavilion Repairs and Access Control Project. This is a much-used facility in our main city park. Scott, would you review the.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. I did get solicited a couple of proposals for some improvements. It's something we did put money in the budget for. Made some needed improvements over, as mayor mentioned, over the pavilion. The least costly proposal I got was from Nightwag Construction Company here in Atkins. The total amount is seven thousand five hundred forty-six dollars and twenty cents. That does include materials. I think about sixty percent of that cost is for, for materials. And I got, given you a copy of his proposal here in the packet. Generally, again, the work just involves, if you've seen it recently, it's been taken quite a bit of abuse over there. So both restroom doors are, for the most part, non-functioning. I think they've taken some beatings and don't really close and are broken up and warped and everything. And so we've got calls that people can just walk right in, you know. So, so need to get those taken care of. The sink and kitchen area has been damaged over the years. So we put in new ca- pros, put in new cabinets and sink, faucets, just simple base cabinets from the lumberyard here in town. All this material come from Atkins Lumber, so by your local, new hardware on the doors. The sink right now is not vented to the outside, so we have a former fix that. So a lot of times when you fill up the sink, it's a double sink, and then one side starts spitting out water on the other side, because not venting out the roof. So gonna have that taken care of. Couple of the real problem spots are those doors. The double door is not, doesn't stay secure. It's been kind of beaten up over the years. It's kind of off the hinges. So we're gonna have him try to fix that double door so we get it secured, put a chain on it. So in the event somebody pushes hard on it, that they're not, off the hinges and, and that. So he thinks he can get that fixed. The other, the south door, it also doesn't, it's not air-tight, so there's a big gap underneath it there. So we're gonna work on that threshold, try to fix that up, so we get the weather protecting there, not keeping the mice from, and, and stuff like that. So that's primarily the work that he's gonna do over there. The other bid that I got was considerably higher than this. So I think it's a pretty, pretty good number for us. The other add-on to that is something working with Pam over at the library. They do our reservation system for the pavilion through a call pad. So when people come in, she coordinates bookings and getting them the, right now it's a hard key to get in and out. A lot of times, people will try to come in too early. So what this system is from Permar would be a FOB system, a, a remote access system, where she, if we have a code, and she can give out the code to people that were renting it, and can control them not getting in too early, and, and manage that a lot better. And then she's had issues where just kind of miscommunications on things, where she might not be available and somebody needs to get in. She can unlock it with an app on her phone from anywhere in the world. So really, we have the same system in clearly in some of our buildings where we rented out the commuting room that we had there. Just work really easy. We will probably, after these improvements, increase the rent over there. You know, we're putting some money into this. Right now, it's pretty, pretty inexpensive to rent that. So we're probably gonna look at a new rate structure there to try to recover some of this investment back. But I think these improvements are gonna be well, well worth it for us. Mayor, you have any?
I think it's a, like I mentioned, a well-used facility. It's, the, the community appreciates having it there. We should keep it in good order to, to allow folks to have a good experience. So I would recommend approval. And it's actually the first major renovation we've done on that in probably decades more than it's in.
And structurally, the building's in good shape and everything. I mean, there could be some more improvements down the road that's a good spot.
Okay, so with that, would we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the proposal.
Second.
Second by Durski.
Um, the utilization of the facility has kind of got me thinking. We were going to separate the related, I'm just curious about utilization of all things. The building fields, the bathrooms down there, you know. But it made me think, we, we did, we were gonna be looking for utilization on the equipment, the leased equipment that we authorized for public works. I just wanted to bring that up. Hope for, you know, hopefully we're tracking that.
Yep, yep. They keep track of it already. I don't know what it is currently, but, you know, we took possession of the new skid loader and excavator in July, so I had a few issues there.
And I think even the jetpack.
Yep, yep.
So just some idea that the council would possibly understand, because otherwise, three years later, you gotta replace a part, you gotta some upgrade or whatever, and it's the same battle to try to get people to understand how, how important it is.
Yep, you bet. I understand.
Do we have a tiered rate structure for the rental of the park?
Where she's gonna work, council.
I, I, I really, you know, with our growth, I think for a long time, it was never available to people who weren't citizens, and then kind of did. And if, if it's going to be available, I think we should have a lower rate for rent citizens than we do for non-s citizens. Especially with our parks and soccer fields and stuff, it's pretty standard.
Pretty standard.
Yeah. We're, we're getting a more formal, sure, to get that documented.
Yep. Yeah, I think we gotta get a better formal written agreement in the rates and all that.
Inspection after, so.
Exactly.
And increasing the prices.
So that's one also that will be organized, a much larger.
All right. Hearing no further discussion, call for the roll call vote. Trevor Durski.
Aye.
Jim Kane.
Aye.
David Fisher.
Aye.
EJ Bell.
Aye.
And Samantha Peterson.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on to item number six, the city administrators' report. Scott?
Uh, not the mayor's report.
Okay. Now, on the mayor's report, consider that nomination papers for city elective positions are due by five PM here at Atkins City Hall. It's a little different than some cases, but five PM City Hall on September eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. And there's a packet available for those. Also, next week is Iowa League of Cities Annual Conference Exhibit, and Scott and I will be attending that. That's an annual statewide conference. And attended the Small City at the Corridor. That's our peers with around Cedar Rapids and Eastford. It was last week, the conference there. And also the East Central Iowa Council Governance Meeting, two weeks ago. So it's been activity there.
Uh, have we had council members go to that annual conference?
We have in the past, um.
It's a big conflict, a big conference in our industry that I haven't, I just haven't been able to work for, and you might try it for next year.
I would recommend, in fact, anybody can go. It's a great, great time. But, I mean, just learning new things. There is, understandably, it's during the week and three days and all that sort of thing, so.
I'll work at it.
Yep. And it's attended by about four or five hundred people.
About five hundred, yeah.
And we get folks from communities in Benton that go.
Oh, yeah, Benton.
Benton, just like, not working with other adjacent councils, I think, is kind of one of the things.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I know Benton sends a good product.
Yeah, I'd say, but Eastern Iowa is always, the whole region of Eastern Iowa is well-represented. Uh, now, next year, it does move across the state. Next year, I guess it is in Bedore for Davenport, so you'll have more of the local area. But, yep. Okay, with that, then, we have the consent agenda item. That's, would be approval of the abstract bills and claims, and that is updated this evening. And we have updated from city clerk Shelley. Thank you. And then we have approval of the August twenty twenty-six, or August twenty-sixth, city council meeting minutes, approval of Resolution two zero two five zero nine zero three. That's a resolution approving transfers between funds, general fund to CDPG. And approval of Resolution two zero two five zero nine zero four, resolution authorizing transfer of funds. Resolution authorizing transfer of funds, city savings account to checking account. That's the consent agenda for this evening.
Mayor, I may, on that, uh, one item on the end there, that, as I just recognized Shelley's efforts on that, on the savings account. And Trevor, uh, EJ brought this up in the past as well. We did the new investment policy here a couple of months ago. Uh, so we will look at, and Shelley, thank you for bringing this up. To better utilize those funds that are in the checking account, uh, not drawing much interest there. Uh, so we're gonna move those out and put them into higher earning investments, so.
Hey, I would just say on that, you might wanna do that sooner than later, especially with, uh, potential rate cuts coming up. Good saying.
We'll get a block in tomorrow.
That's coming from my.
Shelley can run right down to the.
That's coming from my busy side. You know, hey, tell her to get moving.
Yep. Sorry my life here.
Well, we'll, um.
Get it done, get it done.
Last for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Dursky.
Second.
Second by Fisher. Further discussion? Hearing none. The roll call vote is Trevor Dursky.
Aye.
Jim Kane.
Aye.
David Fisher.
Aye.
EJ Bell.
Aye.
And Samantha Peterson.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to new busi- or other business, I should say.
I just wanna recognize Shelley. Uh, she hit the ground absolutely running. Um, doing an outstanding job, saving the city money, uh, making things a priority. I wanna thank you. Thank you for coming on board here. It's a pleasure having you here. And it's really, really nice, honestly, to have you in this meeting and being here to ask, answer any of the questions because I, I think that's a very important, uh, and I appreciate it.
Sure, you're welcome. Thank you.
Mayor, will you ask him?
Yes.
Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you.
For the October fourteenth meeting, I don't want to be available.
Okay.
Let me get that right. That date is in summer.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's the first meeting of the month, yeah.
Okay.
We got a firm, wide strategy. I'll be part of, uh, the day, that day, the next day. Just your, whatever you might need for.
Thank you. Okay. With that, um, we've completed our business for this evening. Appreciate everybody's contributions and, uh, this time we entertain a motion to adjourn, so.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Kane, second by Dursky. It's not debatable. The roll call vote is Trevor Dursky.
Aye.
Jim Kane.
Aye.
David Fisher.
Aye.
EJ Bell.
Aye.
And Samantha Peterson.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Yeah, we had, uh, probably, uh, we had ten, eleven on, uh, three books.
What time do you have, Mayor?